...special meeting for, um, um, in regards to policies and, and universal consent form. Let's see, the first thing we are, the first thing on the agenda is to review the ISBA policy recommendations. And it's a lot. So there are three attachments, the updates, um, and then the, kind of a summary, and then one and two. So how would you guys like to go through this? We obviously can't just go through page by page.
Policy by policy.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think we're going to, if we could, we'll have Mrs. Athwood and Ms. Johnson just lead the board through the various policies. They've done extensive research and have been writing and rewriting and in contact with ISBA. And so if that would be all right, we could just have them kind of facilitate the discussion.
Um, now wait, to be clear, um, this isn't what we're looking at then, it's different?
No, it's the same.
Oh, they haven't rewritten any of these?
No, 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 no.
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It just aligning them with ours. So, um, I would just have Cassie go first. She's going to go through that, um, the health, uh, sex education and human sexuality policy. Um, and then I can just kind of summarize the rest. It's really just kind of in line with the memo that I included today.
So it's not word for word with what we got in the email? It's, it's aligning it, it's changing it to align with ours, is that right?
Um, basically, any of the new sections in the ISBA policy that they include in their updates, um, we will find the best place in our policy to add that language if you're okay with the language. So it really is more, the ISBA language that you've received, um, if you don't have any, um, issues with it, uh, then we will just take their language and just paste it into our existing policy. Our policies are not exactly worded like ISBA's, but we can add the, the new sections or the revised sections to correlate with ours.
So we, we, so we aren't actually looking at all of these?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, it will be all of the policies. Um, in the memo, I just put, like, they have four different policies here. On the first one, it's student records, permission to use likeliness and volunteer confidentiality. Um, at the top, I have put our policy 8404 is our FERPA policy, and all of those would apply. So instead of doing four new policies, we would just take their policy language from all of those and put it into our FERPA policy. Does that make sense?
So I've got a question in this tandem then, when it says complete in red, what does that signify?
Um, that we have already completed, uh, their proposed changes. Like, we already adopted our, um, student cell phone policy that aligns with the new law. And then we have also completed our public participation in board meetings when that law changed, because we looked at our board policy, our board meeting policy. So we've updated those already.
Right, sorry.
So anything, those are complete, uh, we've already, um, met the, the conditions and statute.
Right, so we won't be considering any, any of the language for those?
Yeah.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, but the rest, we are?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Yes, thank you, and thanks for that explanation.
Good afternoon. Um, Amy and I, and she sends her apologies for, um, having to miss today. We spent a lot of time this summer, um, really going over, um, the legislative changes and our language in our board policy as well as ISBA in regards to sex education topics and human sexuality, um, where those differ, where those overlap. So we actually have, um, kind of two pieces to the proposal that we have. Um, the first would be for action to remove the health, um, instruction sex education topics from the grade seven through twelve universal spreadsheet. The reason for that request is given the least, the recent legislative changes that were effective on July one of this year. It's no longer necessary to opt out from sex education or sex topics, but rather students and parents are required to opt in to all human sexuality topics. And we'll discuss here in a minute where some of those can differ at times. So additionally, Idaho Code no longer requires affirmative permission or the opt-in, um, to provide sex education, only that, um, instruction is provided on human sexuality as narrowly defined and sometimes ambiguously defined by Idaho Code. And because of that, most sex education topics are likely to overlap in even some broad interpretations of what the definition of human sexuality is. And because of that, ISBA has taken the approach of using an opt-in permission process for both sex education and instruction related to human sexuality as defined by Idaho Code. So because of that, um, our teachers will be doing the opt-in process as defined in code. Therefore, it wouldn't be necessary for it to be on the universal spreadsheet. So that's the-
You have the consent form?
Oh, yes, sorry. The consent form. Spreadsheets all over my brain today.
So what page are you on?
I'm looking at page four, is that?
Page four.
I have page four, but that's just the, um, the summary, right?
The summary of, um, the policy that we're going to propose. So that's the next piece here, and I'm not sure what page it's on, I'll have to-
Oh.
Oh, the policy, perfect. It, we're going to talk about the policy of sixty-one oh five, is that what you're talking about here?
Yeah, I just wondered what the page that was on. Does it go-
I'm going to have to lean on you guys as I only have my notes.
I can get that pulled up and let you know what page that is, Deanna.
My printed off doesn't have page number. Actually, so I don't know why I'm asking for the page number. I don't have page numbers on it. But on this, I, it does, because just the PDF has the page.
Has the page numbers on it.
I'll let Renee figure that out, as unfortunately I left my laptop downstairs. I did type up my notes for once though, so they're somewhat legible.
I think, I think the page numbers you have on there.
So if it's not on the universal consent form, is that-
Right there it says page four.
They would-
Why, I have page four.
Provide, or they could sign up for the class-
Deanna, it's page sixteen of that policy update two packet.
So there's a process, um, and Amy and I are going to have the opportunity, if this is the process that we move forward with, of going out to all secondary schools and working not just with health teachers, but with all teachers on what this specifically means and, and what other subjects it can fall into. And those health teachers will have a process and where they send out the opt-in form, um, where they can track it. Um, that allows them to do that within the requirements of the two-week window and, and receiving it back the week before. And that process felt much more manageable to teachers and administrators as opposed to using the universal consent form. And so it gives the teachers at their individual class level that, that control and that ability to track that more easily. And so the, oh, sorry?
Oh, I, oh, I just said yes. Um, and, and also with that, it says that they have to, I guess, provide a link or something to parents or somehow tell them or show them what that is, what they're talking about?
Absolutely, yep. And so that's part of the process when Amy and I go out on, we'll call it our little roadshow, that we're going to share with specifically health teachers, but we also want to catch every teacher in the high school setting so that they can be aware of what human sexuality, the definition, what topics could be included. Um, but for health teachers specifically, we're working with them to develop that uniform process that they can all use and have the similar information to send out to parents and what that would look like. So our first request for action would be to remove that from the universal, um, consent form. The second piece that we, we would ask is in lieu of utilizing that universal spreadsheet, our recommendation is to remove related sex education topics from curriculum policy sixty-one oh one and adopt a new policy number sixty-one oh five using language from, uh, ISBA's model policy. This policy that, um, they have has taken into consideration all of the elements of multiple different laws that have been mentioned in more than one policy. And it puts them all in one place, all in one policy, which will increase clarity for teachers, administrators, parents, for the board. Um, and then again, gives us an opportunity to work with all teachers to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what policy sixty-one oh five is and how to handle, um, human sexuality topics in class.
So are we just going to change the, the ISBA board policy twenty-three twenty and just put sixty-one oh five? And it's going to just read exactly word for word like that? Okay.
And that's the one that just chooses to treat both sex education and human sexuality under that same umbrella, which teachers by and large we've heard are really grateful for because that reduces their, um, their possibility of having to define for themselves or make that decision. So they're really grateful to be able to put it all under this same umbrella.
Are you at all, I mean, I don't know how permission slips work today when you've got this tight window of announcement versus collecting, is that going to be, are you concerned about that? And what happens to those students that you don't get a response from the parents and-
So students that we don't get a response from will be much like the students that would have opted out last year under that, and they'll be, uh, and there's already a developed alternate assignment. These topics generally in high school usually last from a day, sometimes two. So they worked last year to develop, um, a really great alternative assignment, and that would just then flop. So students that don't opt in would have that. In terms of the collection process, there's a lot of ideas floating around, and I think really we're honing it down to the best one and, and utilizing, um, technology to be able to do that. Um, but there will still likely be a backup option of a paper form that can go home at the last minute. But Google Forms right now, until we clear it with Renee to make sure that that's a, a legal enough document to receive parent opt-in, that seems to be the process that seems most efficient and that teachers seem happiest about.
So does this also cover biology? I mean, isn't that the next most obvious place you're gonna see this?
And that is definitely one of the reasons that instead of just pulling in health teachers, we decided we wanted to go out to all teachers, um, because some science classes will be impacted. A lot of those classes, it's from our interpretation of the law so far, aren't going to be as impacted unless they're specifically talking about human reproduction. And in some of those classes, it's not necessarily human reproduction. And but in those ones that do, it will.
Okay.
And they just send out their own?
Yep.
And they, and, and the parents already have access to that curriculum anyway? 'Cause it's just the biology?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then are we also considering, um, the procedure, twenty-three twenty procedure one, to go along with that and just naming it our procedure?
Yeah.
The, the number, changing the number?
Yep.
Okay.
So it'll be sixty-one oh five P, is that it?
Yes.
Uh, yes, right.
I think that's it for Cassie, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right.
Thank you. Um, so on the, I'll just go through the memo, just 'cause it, it did kind of summarize a little bit better which of our policies will be affected. Um, so, policy eighty-four oh four is our FERPA policy. Um, and then the, the ISBA policies that, um, will go into the, that policy are the thirty-five seventy student records, um, the permission to use likeliness and the volunteer confidentiality. Um, those will be likely, those are their forms. Um, I don't think that we have those specific forms, so we will just include that as type of a, a procedural update. Anything that they've changed in there, um, we can just add to the FERPA procedure.
So the policy will be the same, it's just the procedure will include that form?
Right.
So on the volunteer confidentiality, are we gonna, are we gonna make sure that the volunteers know what they're liable for?
Yeah, and they do, we do have them come in and they do all of the background checks, and they are required to review our volunteer policy. So it'll affect that FERPA and then the volunteer policy, and they'll be required to review both of those before volunteering in the district.
Just so they don't accidentally, just in talking-
Right.
You know, talk about a student and not knowing that, that they're, they're not allowed to. And, and so is that different than it used to be? Because is it volunteers that just come in and help with English, you know, with like reading with the kids? Or is it strictly volunteers that are, when they are unsupervised?
Yes, unsupervised, and the ones that are regular volunteers, like if they, yes. Uh, if they are coming in every day to do the reading, yes, we do require them to do that as well.
But not like our moms?
Right.
Okay.
Are they gonna receive training for HIPAA as well?
I don't think they do. Uh, and, I was gonna say, I don't think they're involved in that, just FERPA and then our own volunteer policy.
No, I mean the volunteers. Okay.
Right, HIPAA's-
They have a packet, okay, thank you. Yes, please.
Oh, I would be curious, too. Thank you.
Okay, were there any other questions on the language that ISBA has provided on those policies? Okay, so the next, um, uh, most of this update one had to deal with transportation. Um, so a lot of their policies are separate policies that we will incorporate into our transportation policy. We have one specifically that is transportation to and from daycare. And then we have, uh, two that we would make new policies, which is contracting for transportation services. We do sometimes contract for those services, um, but we have not had a policy in the past. And then one on district-owned vehicles, so those would be two new.
Those two, you're just gonna adopt word for, you're asking to adopt word for word, and then the others?
Correct, unless there are anything-
What's here is now, it's, it's not gonna be the same?
So what, what is here, that is what I'm proposing, that we adopt the language that they have for those two policies. We had just never had policy language on those two specific things, so.
Okay, but not the rest of it?
Right, the rest of it would be incorporated into our transportation policy.
Okay, so when, so, um, we'll see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, it wouldn't be anything really different than, um, what you're seeing here. It's anything new that they're requiring would be added to ours. So anything they've highlighted in green on those transportation policies will go into ours.
I didn't know about that rule about idling.
Right, yeah, that's like a new deal.
Oh, longer than three minutes, oh, longer than five minutes.
Yep.
My goodness.
Okay, um, and then in the ISBA Update Two, um, the first couple meetings of the board, um, I wasn't gonna recommend any changes except for, um, after reviewing the additional language that they have, um, there was one piece that we are missing, and that is regarding the consent agenda. Um, we do follow the rules already, but I'll add just a sentence after, um, the, our regular board meetings, that consent agenda, uh, topics will not contain resolution or budget or fees. Um, other than that, we have already made all of the updates on those. So it would just be that one line. Um, and then the next is about trustee spouse employment. Uh, we don't necessarily have to have a policy, so that one is gonna be up to you guys if you want to have a policy about that, or if you don't, we could consider adding a sentence to the organization and governance of trustees. Um, that just says that the district does not employ trustee spouses.
Um, it really doesn't apply to us, right?
Exactly, it doesn't apply to us, and we're not allowed to, so.
You just follow the law?
Yeah, so we don't have to have a policy, so we can skip that one if you guys are good with it. Um, and then the next, we already reviewed all of the health and sex education. Um, the next-
And so that'll be, that'll just be the same words as there-
Yes.
And even the parent complaint, like they have all that?
Yeah, Amy and Cassie went through that in great detail, and they said that they really thought it was pretty thorough and-
Included it.
It's worked well.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so they were good with all of those, and they didn't want to make any changes to the language and the procedure or the forms. Um, the next one is their controversial issues.
Can I ask you one thing on that one?
Yes.
One thing, it says, um, it's, I don't know what page it is, because I, I'm looking at the hard copy, but it is on, under that curriculum.
Policy sixty-one oh one?
Just one second, let me find it.
There's, the ISBA number is twenty-three forty. Is it the controversial issues, or are you talking about sex education?
It's not the, no, it was, I should, I, I should have labeled my student, oh, was it in two?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I'm looking in the wrong spot, sorry about that. Oh, well, you know what, you can just move on, because I can't, I'm looking for it. It just said something about, oh, here it is. It just says, "The teacher shall be free to choose supplemental materials to enhance regular curriculum." I was thinking that the law said that, like, curriculum including supplemental, it had to go through curriculum adoption committee. Isn't that the way that law says? It's a different law?
So I think the only thing that we changed in our curriculum policy, and we'll move that out of curriculum because it's sex education, is where it says that supplemental materials can be selected with the exception of sex education.
Okay.
So any, like, other topics, they can choose supplemental materials. But if it's controversial, they have to get building principal permission.
Okay, and I was just making sure that it was in line with the law-
Right.
Having to do with the curriculum advisory committee? Because I think that law says all curriculum, including supplemental materials, had to be approved.
I'll look into, if they've made changes to that, the advisory committee, then I will look at that, 'cause I haven't seen anything about that.
Yeah, to just make sure that matches up.
Okay.
We'll ask Ma, Ms. Atwood to look at that as well.
Okay, all right, that's the only question I had on that.
What does that even include? I mean, that just seems like an incredibly overburdened some, I mean, if a teacher wants to use a newspaper article or a magazine research, or, I mean, I, I guess I'm just not understanding.
And I'll do a little bit more research, uh, myself as well, but my understanding is that our current policy still allows for teachers to use supplemental materials, um, as long as they're non-controversial. And if anything is questionable, that they work with their building principal, who can also work with us to determine. Um, the supplemental material is an important part of the process, because all curriculum, no, no curriculum's perfect, lots of curriculum is good, but there are areas in which need to be supplemented, and the ability to review and do a committee process for all supplemental materials, K through twelve, would be, I don't wanna say impossible, but-
Astronomical.
It would be astronomical, yeah. Um, and so my understanding is that our policy still, um, provides for that supplemental material without going through, um, a full committee adoption, because we have those safeguards in place of the building administrator and the curriculum department to refer back to.
So are you relying on the teacher to, if this is possibly questionable, they would talk to their principal, otherwise the assumption is they would be fine?
Yeah, and there, there's, um, very direct instruction, I can say, as, um, an academic assistant principal previous in, in my life, and it wasn't that long ago, it was a year ago.
Recent.
Very recent, uh, yes, there's, it's, it's not a willy-nilly process. It's, it's still thoroughly vetted, a lot of times at the PLC level, something controversial comes up. A lot of our curriculum is pretty holistic, um, at the elementary level. I know that, um, principals have even, uh, a deeper role, I should say, in helping to identify supplemental materials. And through our coaches, a lot of those supplemental materials are vetted, but it is definitely, and, uh, it would be a monumental undertaking to try to approve every supplemental material that, that might be necessary.
'Cause like ELA, that would just be go through the coaches, like, if they want a new set of books that they have in their classroom, they just, that use, they use for instruction, they would just go with, work with the coaches?
Anything like that, that would actually be purchasing, um, a, a set of books for a classroom, usually, not all, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and say usually always comes through curriculum, because those are funds that, that we help to be a part of supplying, so I don't wanna mis-answer that.
Oh.
As maybe sometime in the past, I don't know, but I know for us, um, if a set of books or a supplemental curriculum is purchased, we're well aware of that. Um, but supplemental materials that might be gathered from here or there, that's at the building level. Any purchase of a supplemental material or curriculum, we would absolutely be part of.
Prior to Skyward, we, um, maybe didn't have the tracking available to us through the curriculum department, but with Skyward, there will be a multi-level approval process.
Absolutely. Hope that helped, I will continue to look into that a little further, make sure that-
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking, if we had a standing committee, that everything could just flow, anything that needed to, so we'd, you know, the whole thing, you know, they could, three months at a time, or six months, or semester at a time, or I don't even know, trimester at a time. You know, where if, if we had to do something more along those lines, it could just flow, like, all the information, you know, like, it just would be constantly flowing.
Right. Um, and again, I'll bring that back when Amy's back, and we'll discuss that. Um, I know that, um, the process of anything that's controversial right now, flowing through building administrators and through the curriculum department has been pretty successful and, and kept us from having to expand out to reviewing-
Everything.
Everything, which would be pretty monumental, but I will, um, double-check and make sure that what our board policy is and what we're currently doing, I think what you were originally addressing is, does it fall in line with what the state required for adoption? And I'll put that on here, and I'll double-check and look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, after that, uh, we have advanced opportunities, that change is pretty minimal. Um, so we'll just take those couple of sentences and add them into our existing advanced opportunities policy. Um, the next that they have on there is their entrance, placement, transfer, and their open enrollment policies. Um, we have, uh, some of the changes would need to go into, uh, two different policies. We have one that is eighty-five oh one, student discipline, uh, kind of addresses the reasons for, uh, denial of enrollment. And then also our district attendance areas and student transfer policies, it kind of addresses our open enrollment, so we would add those denial reasons as well to that policy.
So this is not the policy we're approving, then?
Uh, not the entire policy, no. We have our existing student discipline and then our district attendance areas and student transfer. Um, the pieces that they have highlighted-
Some of them are different, I read through, and some of them are different than our policy, and so I would just wanna know which one we are talking about.
So there, there are sections that they highlight in green as new, um, which anytime that it's updating, there, like, uh, we do have a spot in ours where it talks about denial of enrollment. So we would just take that language that they have in green and put that in ours.
But not necessarily that policy?
Right, not the entire policy, 'cause we already have an existing policy, but there are new additions relative to denial of enrollment. Would go into those two policies.
Okay, so are, are we gonna be able to review that whole policy?
Yes.
So we can just, um-
See how it reads through that. Yeah, and I think my intent was rather than making the changes ahead, if there were any changes proposed to ISBA's language, let's get those now, and then I'll put them into our policy.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't find any changes on this.
Yeah, we didn't either, in, in our review.
I just wanna know how it matches up, because some of these, I think, are better.
Yeah.
And more, it, it just seems clearer, and it's very clearly outlined.
Absolutely, if we get to a point where you look at theirs and say you really like their policy and you wanna replace ours with theirs, I'm fine with that, 'cause the closer we get to ISBA's, the, you know, more manageable it is for us.
You're not emotionally tied to it, right?
Yeah, I am not emotionally tied to any of these.
Right, right, and then there's that whole table of the yellow, where it has the class sizes, and everything.
Right, and that's in our procedure, like, the, where we list, um, what is our, um, classroom maximum sizes for open enrollment, yeah.
'Cause I was wondering if we should have it all in this policy-
Right.
So that everybody knows.
Yes.
Nobody's in the dark, like parents know.
I think that theirs is cleaner than ours.
It's a lot more clear, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I appreciated it, I read through the whole thing, I'm like, oh, I understand this whole thing.
Well, you see what you can do to refine that one, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you lean more on ISBA's, what we might be able to delete with ours?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, even if it is just a straight, like, we like their language better and put that into our policy number.
It's just very clear and inclusive, it even has the discipline, these are the exclusions.
I was gonna say, there's some, some elements of theirs that I think maybe ours, uh, is a little bit less clear, and theirs is very succinct.
So just to clarify and make sure I understand, uh, and I, I think I'm correct, but I just wanna verify. So then, of course, I've looked at all the green, uh, stuff, and, and, and also then, whether it's in yellow is optional, and we're gonna be considering that.
Right, and that's if, I get the direction, that, that's something that you guys wanna do. If you like their language, I'm happy to do that for this next, uh, meeting, when we go through, um, looking at all of the, the updated policies for second reading.
Right.
So on that controversial, oh, I'm sorry, right, go ahead.
Oh, well, yeah, um, so then, yeah, we're gonna look at it for first reading, and then anything we'd like that we would, well, you prefer the wording, then on the second reading, we can go ahead and introduce that, great, thank you.
It doesn't seem like this can really be first reading if I'm not really, if we aren't really clear as far as like which parts we're using and which parts we're not. But, um, did you want that yellow included in the controversial? That paragraph in the yellow?
I, we've never had that language in ours, so, and I, I don't know that we would need that, so it would just be if you guys want it.
So that's not something that you want us to consider?
It was not.
It's not what we've discussed to consider.
Yeah.
So it, so the difference is that, that teachers just ask the building principal, don't, and they don't notify the parents? That's the difference right there, right?
Right.
The only difference, okay.
What policy are you talking about?
I'm talking, oh, I'm sorry, I went back, because I saw the, when you mentioned the yellow, it did have a yellow on, in the, under the curriculum, uh, uh, well, it just says controversial issues. It doesn't say curriculum, it just says controversial issues.
So, uh, sixty-one oh one, or, they're twenty-three forty?
Theirs is twenty-three forty. Ours would be sixty-
Yeah, there, there's an option on that, yeah.
Five, yeah, so I wondered if that's something that we are considering or not.
And that would be up to you guys, if that's something that you want us to include, then we can do that when we bring the second reading language, if not, then we'll just leave it.
I guess it's not really clear, because if it's really controversial, then yeah, of course, they should be notified, but it depends on what you consider controversial. I guess it's not really clear because if it's really controversial, then yeah, of course they should be notified, but it depends on what you consider controversial.
The current, the current process that we have has, by and large, worked really well. And managed to filter those things out as they came, so initial reaction was that it wasn't necessary. But if there's something more that you want us to look at, please just let me know and I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I just feel like it depends on what you're talking about.
Right, right, that's why.
Like, I mean, the human sexuality is already covered, so as far as controversial topics, I guess it just depends on what you're talking about. So I don't really know what to say about that.
The next one that ISBA had was the student-owned electronic communication devices. On my memo, I just put complete because we are done with that. And then they had a change to their gender identity and sexual orientation policy. I just put no policy recommendation because we do not have a policy and I don't know if we are interested in adopting theirs or just not having one.
Thirty-two, for thirty-two eighty-one?
Yes.
That is included in human sexuality though, right?
It is.
Okay, that's what I thought, so if they are, if they are offering any instruction.
Right.
That's included in that, right?
Yes.
So they have to have opt-in permission?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, it doesn't seem like we need two policies.
Okay. The next is back again to our student discipline, it's the corrective actions and punishment. They updated their policy, but that would just be the same policy addition, updating that language on denial of enrollment. The next is their student.
I'm sorry, I did notice something on the gender identity and sexual orientation.
Okay.
I know it's already in our, in our policy somewhere about the use of bathrooms according to the law. Didn't we just, did we just put the law in to our policy already, when the law changed, or not?
I don't think that we ever had policy that addressed it.
Okay, wasn't there a new law? Not this year, was it last year?
It was last year and then it was being. Yeah, it was going through the court system and so we were kind of waiting to see what happened with that. In fact, it's now going to the Supreme Court, so.
So waiting until Supreme Court ruling, or I think what we've always done is just case-by-case basis. And we just have not had it in policy.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I guess once, I guess what, when that is done, then I guess we should have a policy. Because we can't not have a policy if it is the law.
So a question for Superintendent Howell, so then you would suggest we would be wise to hold off on this thirty-two eighty-one until we see what the courts say?
I think so, because we've been able to navigate through those requests with families. And it's been okay, you know.
Yeah, that's been my understanding.
Yes, and so once we have that determination through the judicial system, then I think we should look at.
Yeah, we just, yeah, so this, this entire thirty-two eighty-one is optional and we might be best just to table that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's kind of what we were thinking. The next, where was I? Oh, their next policy that they changed was their student fees fines. I just put no recommendation on that one. Because they were removing the empowering parents program and we never added that to our policy for fees or fines, so. We don't have any language dealing with empowering parents in any of our policies. The next is immunization requirements, and there was a change that anytime that you talk about recommended or required immunizations for school. That you also provide which exemptions are allowable, and we do that. We haven't had that in our policy, either the list of immunizations, but we do provide them at the start of the year or at new, new student enrollment packets. But we do also have the exemption, exemption form in that materials that we send out to the elementary schools. So they were already getting that, but we, we can add this to our student enrollment requirements policy, just so it's.
So when, when parents get an alert, hey, your child is missing this.
Right, then it goes, but you can also fill out this exemption if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, so as long, you have to provide it at the same time.
Okay, so we just add it to that alert?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll add that little piece to our student enrollment requirements policy. The next is a public participation in board meetings. We have completed that. We took out that provision. That patrons could only talk about agenda items, that is removed from our policy already. The next is the volunteer assistance procedures, that was that same, same changes that talked about the background checks. We already have all of that process in place, but we would just add their highlighted language to our volunteer policy.
In the green?
Yes, and the last few are purchasing guide policies. So they have their public works contracting, it's all just the amounts that have increased again. So that would go into our policy fifty-one oh four purchasing guide to just change all of those thresholds on the public works projects. And then there, one of the last ones is their emergency and disaster preparedness. This is one that if you are okay with, I would recommend replacing our policy language with theirs. Their policy and procedure, procedure language is a lot more current, up-to-date and succinct than ours. Our emergency preparedness policy has been needing to be revised for quite a long time, so that would be a recommendation to just adopt their policy and procedure.
Okay, so I, one thing I was going to ask on the public works.
Yes.
The one that you just mentioned before, is so we talked about, do we want all the bids to come to the board? And so this would be that they would not be coming to the board if it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or less, the semi-formal bidding.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
So in the past, we've always had it come to the board, these are the bids, and so I guess.
If it was under the previous threshold, which was what, a hundred?
Right, and so I guess what my question is.
Okay.
Seventy-five thousand and now it's two-hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering though, if, so we approve, we approve a capital improvements project. But it's kind of based on what we think it's going to cost, and so if we don't get those. Then how will we know, like, that we want to still go ahead with it? If, if it came in like three times as much as what we thought, and so then, you know, you know, it's just always that being like, oh, maybe. Because we didn't approve, like, both bathrooms, we approved one, you know, that kind of a thing. And they were both two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or less, but we wanted to make sure we made that decision that we only wanted to do one. And they were two separate.
Do you want to come up and address that one?
So I, I don't know, I, I feel like it's important, like, in regards to our capital improvement, to still kind of be able to make those decisions.
So in terms of the bidding itself, we have a threshold, but then what is it the board would like to see?
Correct, and yeah, that's.
Yeah, so it's really two questions.
Yep, exactly, so to address your question, I can bring whatever you would like to the board. That being said, we, we would like to have, take advantage of, you know, the higher limits. Just because, well, some of our lower bids, we've been having some problems. Not big problems, but just some extra time with some of our low bids. And if that threshold was just a little bit higher, we could solicit, you know, again, the three, three quotes and so forth. We could still bring that to the board, but I think we might get a little bit better quality, maybe, contractors. So that we're not stuck with that, with that low bid and still.
There's two, yeah, there's two issues here that I guess we're talking about because through the state, we have this permission.
Yep.
And I think it's wise to make sure that it's reflected in our policy, that through the state, we have the permission. But do we want the board, do, do we as a board want to know, because that's two really different things.
Sure, and I, I'm here to say, yes, I'll do whatever you would like that you feel you have time to, you know, keeping that, you know, ten-thousand-foot view of the overall project.
So we could go through the less formal, so we could go through the less formal bidding process, which is kind of the issue of being forced to take the low bid. But still bring it for approval, is that what you're meaning?
Yeah, oh yeah, we want to take advantage of, of that to get the high quality, you know, the maximum from the state. But I just mean, I, I was thinking that you were saying this is both, we want to take advantage of the higher amount from the state and not have to bring it.
No, no, I think it would, because that, that is, that's a fairly, you know, good-sized amount.
Yeah.
It is, and so if you, if the board wants to say they want to, you want to see anything over a hundred thousand, let me just throw out a number, I don't know.
Right now it's seventy-five.
So right now it's seventy-five. If anything over a hundred thousand, sure, yeah, we can do that, and it would be more of a quote, okay, we, we submitted. You know, we, we submitted a proposal or RFQ for quotes, request for quotes, and these are the ones we got back and it could be very similar.
So just kind of moving forward with what we've already been doing would be that we want to see anything above seventy-five, is that right? But then we still want to be able to have this opportunity.
If that's what the board would want, yeah, sure, we could, unless you want to raise that seventy-five to a hundred thousand or.
Because it's seventy-five today.
It is seventy-five right now.
Right, and we don't have, like, an enormous amount of bids that we.
No, no, and they come in the season, right, I mean, it's in the spring.
I wouldn't mind seeing, just having that in the agenda, you know, for information, what's that area?
Oh, sure.
Just having it listed there so just aware of what kinds of things are being procured, but not having to vote on them.
But I, I would still like it to be the approval process because we have a limited amount of money in our capital improvements. And if we're like, oh, this is like a hundred thousand more than what we were kind of thinking, so then we have to cut corners on a different one. Then it's kind of more, anyway, I think it would be maybe a hundred thousand.
Doctor Howell jumped in there, but I, but I'm okay, I mean, that, because that's not too much extra work for us because we're gathering, we're reviewing. It's just basically a memo, which we have templates.
Which we've already done.
Well, yeah, we're already, we're already doing that.
But is it a time thing as well, that you're having to wait for us versus being able to move forward on things?
Most of the time, I think we've only had to do one emergency, maybe two emergencies in my four years here. So typically, we try to, you know, just even, yeah, get their lead time because we need to get on their schedule. So we should be okay, and if it's an emergency, obviously, we would, we would get in front of you.
Yeah, I think it's wise because it's, it's kind of more, it feels more fiscally responsible for, like, that's a lot of money. Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you know, to not ever see.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. I, I think that's, that's a good, again, we'd like to use that new flexibility of the law, but then the board. If that number is still seventy-five thousand, I'm fine, a hundred thousand, whatever you'd like to say.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, what if we maybe not go all the way to the two-fifty, but maybe.
Yeah, but if we're not, if we're saying, yeah, we don't need to see anything that's a quarter of a million dollars, like, I don't think, I don't know if that's ever.
No, no, and I, I agree, we can, you know, if it's a hundred thousand or whatever you feel comfortable with.
I think a hundred is fine.
Or seventy-five.
I'm fine with that.
It's a lot of money to people, I mean, to everybody.
Yeah.
No, I would agree, I would agree with whatever.
Fifty is, like.
If you're okay with a hundred, I'm okay with a hundred, I mean, it's, it'll be.
I'm okay with that, and then of course, next reading, we'll have Megan and, you know, we can run that by her and see what she thinks as well.
Yeah, a hundred K is okay with me.
Okay, I think so too.
Okay.
Because it's already in our budget anyway, it's just the details of how, okay.
Exactly, and I think the last one was the flags and banners in schools. So if you guys are good with that language, we would just take their entire policy and add that to our policy fifty-two oh one, school facilities. As a new, a new section to that policy.
So is this directly from the law?
Pretty much.
Very specific, these are the only flags allowed?
Yes.
I'm fine with just doing the, the language that's in the law.
Okay.
And not adding or taking.
Theirs is pretty much.
Take away from it, but I'm, I'm fine with.
Verbatim.
So what, what defines a flag?
They define it in the law, in the statute.
Right, but is it a piece of paper, is it a fabric, is it a?
They define that pretty clearly in the law.
Yeah, they define, we just go by the law.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with the size of the law. Pretty much is defined.
I just think that that's the easiest thing to do, is just take the law.
Okay.
Then we have a yellow part on that.
What is there?
Are we, what, what are the thoughts on the optional one?
Well, I guess we'll discuss, are we going to discuss that now or later?
Are we saying that we want the whole thing including, including the optional or without the options?
I, I don't think the options are necessary, I mean, I think that they, they really tried to take the.
Like if they have a school flag?
Well, why don't we discuss that when it comes up?
Well, do any of our schools have a school flag?
I did mean to ask about this because I don't think that our schools necessarily have flags, but Courtney was a little concerned about the banners for we belong here. So I was wondering if we wanted to include that language and maybe do possible action to just adopt that as, yes, this is an official district banner and we can have it displayed.
So, so that would be that yellow, the option?
Right.
So it would be both the school flags and the district flags?
We could have that language in there that if we do have flags, that the board could approve those separately. But right now, I'm not aware of any school flags, are you Doug?
Okay, yeah, that would be good if, if there are any district flags or school flags that they want to have approved.
Right.
That way it's just, it's just.
They may have something printed with the mascot and their name, but officially call it a flag.
But that's, that's in the law.
Yeah.
The school flags is in the law?
Yeah.
Mascots are in the school flags.
Okay.
Oh, we don't even need to worry about that.
No, I mean, I, I think, you know.
Even more simple.
It's been summarized very well, yeah.
Perfect.
But if you're okay with just having that language in the policy that gives you that ability, if there is an issue that comes up, you can separately approve those things.
Well, we can always add that later too for that matter.
Yeah, I think it's good to make sure we approve it, just so then we know it's in compliance with the law.
Okay.
So just in case there's a misunderstanding, that they didn't know or something.
Okay.
And even this discussion is helpful because before the board takes action, we will have our administrators back next week. And so we can say to them, this is the direction we're going, that it sounds like the board wants to adopt these, this language. And so they'll have, you know, an opportunity to start looking and preparing for the final decision from the board.
And then if they say that they would rather have it just be automatically approved, or if they'd rather, if they're okay with it, that any additional flags are put through the board? Yeah, that would be.
So even after first reading, there's always public input, but this would be an opportunity for our administrators and teachers even to make comment.
Can you say again, what was Courtney's concern?
The we belong here banners that we're hanging up, like, at schools.
And she, she does not want them, or she?
No, she would, she wants to have them and was concerned that it would conflict with the new law, but if.
We would just have to approve, but we already approved her whole program.
Exactly.
So that's already approved.
Okay.
And so it doesn't really, I mean, anything that the district would do, like flags and stuff, would always come to the board anyway.
Well, I mean, if we really wanted to, we could just do the statute, but I, I think they summarized the statute pretty well.
Yeah.
As long as that's allowed, then I don't see, I don't see the need to add anything more.
Okay. And I think that kind of wraps up the policy updates for my ISBA. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we're good, we would just move into that special meeting to hear the policies on first reading. And then approve the universal consent form.
The language of that.
We approve this today?
Going into a special meeting.
Oh, just convene special meeting for action and then call for motion.
Okay, so I'll now convene a special meeting for action and I would entertain a motion to hear on first reading the policies and procedures. I, I guess I'm not clear on these because they're not all listed, but. Here is.
The proposed ISBA language.
I guess just this proposed ISBA language, but it wouldn't include the policies that were changing from our own, right?
Well, it would change our policies to hear our policies on first reading using ISBA's model language.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to hear on first reading the inclusion of ISBA's model policies. Listed here in incorporating them into our policies.
Well, I guess I've got a question then, because some of these policies, I mean, I've read them all and they all look real good to me, but some of them have options. Are we going to discuss those options before?
No, I'm not really clear as far as like, what's the final?
So on those, with the optional language, those are not areas that have been new or changed. I would just not entertain those at this time, other than that, flags and banners, that was the only new one, and I was glad you brought that up. Other than that, flags and banners, that was the only new one, and I was glad you brought that up, because that was the only one I was going to address. The new language is in green, their optional language is for people who have adopted their policy model, th, those are just their standard optional language for all school districts. But either we already have that language in our policy, or we've chosen not to include it. So it doesn't really impact our current policies, the optional pieces.
Okay, so the only thing I'm not really comfortable hearing on first reading is the open enrollment policy, because I don't know which parts of our part of policy we're keeping and which parts of this, if it's this whole policy, I don't see anything wrong with this policy, but there's a lot of yellow in it.
Okay.
Of options, and so I'm not sure, like, which options?
Yeah, so the optional pieces, if we're, and that one we can set aside, if we don't want to hear that one on first reading.
All of the policies other than the open enrollment, because that's the only one I saw a lot of yellow, and I'm really not clear what the final policy will be.
Okay, and that one's fine, because that one will be a little bit more in-depth, if we're going to use a lot more of their language.
Uh-huh, and.
But right now, the only.
Class sizes.
Yes, our class sizes, we would stick with the ones that we currently have.
But it would be in policy, not procedure, and that would be a big, quite a big difference.
I think we would leave that in procedure.
It is, and so we're talking about putting it into policy, which I, which I liked, because then it's clear to all the parents. These are our numbers, and then it's, the policy is in one spot. And otherwise, they have to go, like, when your child goes to different schools, that they won't, they don't know what we're talking about.
So the only thing I, in ours, is that it does talk about the process, and then refers them to the procedure, so they have all of that information when they're going through the open enrollment policy?
Right, this one has pretty much all the information except for the open enrollment form, if I'm not misunderstanding. It has all the, kind of the parameters, the numbers.
So if you look at the ISBA language, that is in their procedure, open enrollment procedures. All of those numbers is a procedure, it's not policy.
But things like the board of the receiving school must render a decision at their next regular meeting, and issue the decision in writing, like, all, there's a lot of stuff that if we were to adopt that whole policy, I don't think that's in our policy, and there's one that it, it talks about that, I'll find it. It just talks about the number of, if, a reason to deny a student is if the number of resident students in that, in that enrollment area increases, and it says if a student has attended the school for less than two consecutive years, they could be kicked out. And I'm like, oh, like, if they've been at a school for two years.
Isn't that what our policy says currently as well?
They can be taken back out of it, because I thought our policy was, once they were accepted into a school, in open enrollment, they could continuously.
They can continue as long as there's still space available. The problem, the problem we would run into is, if you continue to accept transfers and we're over capacity, we are required to start busing those students, because it becomes an overload. So then we are busing all of these students if you allow, continue to allow, that's why we look at it every year. Yes, as long as there's space and they are meeting all the criteria, then they're allowed in, but if space is not available, they still, we would be over our enrollment capacity.
So they know that it's only a temporary permission, that they can go to that school, and they could have to go back to their.
Correct, as long as, yeah.
For two years, then they are.
But then this policy, is this what you want? It says, but if they've been there for two years, then that, that option is off the table. They can't be to put back into their original.
And that is the law. Yeah, which is why our policy was going to be updated to say that too.
Okay, so I guess this is our policy then.
Yeah, so we would, we would have to have that discussion, but yes, that is, that is the law as far as once two years, but in our current policy, we don't have that specific wording.
That's why I was wondering if we're, we're taking all of this or not, because there is a lot.
There is, and just to throw this in there too, as you change boundaries in enrollment areas, that also has an impact on the transfer piece, and so that's why we placed zone waivers, which are those that have been there two years or more, ahead of students that are being removed from that boundary area as far as priority goes.
Oh, because even though the boundary's changed, if they've been there for two years, they have.
They have a higher priority.
Have to be able to remain there.
Higher priority to attend there if space is available.
I did not remember that in our discussion with enrollment areas, but was that because the law hadn't changed yet?
No, I think we did talk.
No, it was in, it was in there still, we discussed it.
Okay.
Yes.
I just don't remember that.
And we even asked Amy White for some counsel, legal counsel on what that should look like, because we had initially talked about giving priority to those students who were going to be removed from their boundary school, and she said, you cannot do that because of open enrollment law, that would not be in our best interest, she said.
Okay. All right, so we're just following the, so I guess we're not clear on that, so, so I would.
Well, I have one more.
Oh, yes.
You know, I would just say that I did notice, I think, a typographical error in eighty-one twenty, and then there were just four other options, four other policies with options, and I would just like to look at those options, and if we do those five things, then I think I'm ready to take a vote on everything.
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion, and we'll discuss for a few more minutes.
Yeah, so I, just an update one, policy eighty-one twenty. I, I think I did notice on page twenty-three, a typographical error.
PDF, it's twenty-three?
Yeah, page twenty-three on the PDF.
And this is update two?
And under responsibility, eighty-one twenty on page twenty-three of update one.
Update one, okay. Page twenty-three.
And I can wait till everybody gets there if they wish.
Sorry. Just want to be sure I'm in the right document.
But under responsibilities pupils, it says in the green, students should not shout or talk loudly because it may distract the bus driver. Students shall not should at passer by, I think it should be, students shall not shout at passers by.
Oh.
Okay, so instead of should, it says shout, I just thought I'd mention that, and then you can make that typo correction, if I'm correct.
Oh, yeah, I see that. That's definitely supposed to reach out.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's it for update one, and in, on update two, there are just four policies. On policy twenty-three twenty.
Do you have a page number?
Yeah, page sixteen.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing all that work.
Let me get, let me get there myself.
It's a lot.
At the bottom of the page, it says, please select one. If, will everybody know when they're, they're.
Which policy?
Policy twenty-three twenty on page sixteen of update two.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there are two options down there, it says, please select one, and I would like option one, the board directs that a philosophy of abstinence shall be part of, and the underlying principle in all sex, education instruction, that's already in our policy.
Yes, that's the one, you guys already chose one, so that's why I didn't.
I'm fine with that.
If I may, principal, P L E, instead of P A L.
I think that ours is spelled correctly, Doug.
Oh, yeah, very good, yeah, P L E, yes, the principal is your pal, but the principal is a different kind of principal.
All right.
Yeah. Then on, next one would be policy twenty-three forty on page twenty-two. And there's an option there. Saying the teacher shall notify parents or guardians when controversial issues may be discussed, and that they may have their child excused if family, religious, or moral values so dictate. The teacher should have the principal view questionable materials, et cetera. And so I'm in favor of that option, I don't know how everybody else feels on that.
I, I like that too.
Is this not already, no?
No, this is what I mentioned just a few minutes ago, we talked about a little bit, but I do like that, had to add that in there, because we don't want to get in trouble.
Yeah, I just say it was.
I guess my thought is, does it matter why the, I mean, why would we have to say why the parent wants them, I mean, it's just personal preference, or?
This is basically, right now, they're not required to notify parents, unless it is that human sexuality topic, but if there's another controversial topic, that this is requiring them to notify parents.
I think it's a good thing, because there are very, very few things this would apply to, in my, at least in the way I look at it, there, it would be very few things.
Who defines controversial?
We can define controversial.
That's one of the areas, especially when you begin to look at high school curriculum, and you get into your AP classes, and you get into your dual enrollment courses where the subject matter is prescribed by the university or the college, that it does get actually pretty difficult in order to define what a controversial topic is. And our feeling was that currently, the process that we have has worked really well for that to go through building principles, and then if it needs to go further, it can come up to the district level through the curriculum department and through cabinet. And so because of what a wide or broad definition, what is controversial, how broad that can be, the process that we currently have has seemed to work really well for us, and that's why that was not considered to be added as a portion of it, because it is, it can be, it can be pretty tough to try to proactively define what could be considered a controversial topic by a parent. And so we have those processes in place with the building principal, and then through the district.
I would just think that this would be an administrative burden to, again, first of all, define, like you say, very widely what is controversial, and I would assume that if there is a parent concerned about what their child's they have access to the curriculum or can see the curriculum, and.
Well, not necessarily, if it's supplemental material and stuff like that.
I, I am not in favor of making it a requirement.
From previous experience in, as a, as a high school administrator, the process that we have in working with parents when they have questions about a controversial topic in the classroom has always bore out very positive fruit, we're always able to, I can't think of a time in my time, now, I'm sure there have been individual moments, but in my time, those conversations always went really well with with parents and administrators and teachers working together to determine what's controversial, and the, the preventative, trying to prevent what might be determined as controversial at any level, but especially when you get up into high school curriculum, I think would leave our teachers a little hesitant as, as to not feel confident in being able to define what could be controversial.
I would definitely say, I would definitely exclude any university courses, because that's not, I mean, we don't even see that curriculum anyway.
Well, I guess, to clarify, we, we already have in place, where if a parent has a question about any textbook or curriculum, they can bring it to the curriculum director, et cetera, so I'll tell you what, upon further reflection and upon what you've said, I, I would think that it, I think what we're doing now sounds fine to me, and you know, I would, I would not be in favor of the option, I, I would, I would draw that as, as an approval for the option, I think you've explained things well, and I agree with you.
Yeah, and I have heard of times where it has been able to be resolved in this way.
Yeah, I think, you know, and it could, would be a logistical nightmare, is what you're saying, basically.
Yeah, it, it would be burdens, burdensome, I think is, as you mentioned, the best word. Not even more so for the curriculum department, for buildings and for teachers to try to proactively determine.
Try to anticipate what somebody might, is controversial.
What it might be, and our teachers and administrators are so amazing that they're going to, you know, if they hear that, they're going to try to preventatively determine what that is, and, and the process, like you mentioned, that we have that starts at the classroom level with communication with teacher, and then if necessary involves the administrator, and if necessary, then involves the curriculum department, it has, in my time and experience, it has worked, and so we didn't feel necessary to try to preventatively prescribe what might be.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
And it is in place that, that controversial topics are required to be approved by the principal, that's already in our.
Looks at the negotiated agreement, and two point one four in our negotiated agreement also states that, so the teachers know that in the negotiated agreement, that it talks about the controversial topics as well, as going through the building administrator, so there's another safeguard that it is in the negotiated agreement as well.
Great, yeah, the only reason it was there is an option, and I looked at it, and I thought, oh, this might be a good thing, but upon further reflection, what we're doing is great, thank you. Just two more, I, I think here, policy thirty-two eighty-one.
Page?
On page forty-two.
Thank you.
That, or is that one you're wanting to consider, Ray?
Pardon me?
And previously, we had said that we were going to skip having a policy on that, do you want to consider that now?
No, 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 that's great, yeah, that's right, that's optional, thank you very much, and so we're not going to do that at all. That brings me to the last one, we, we have so many policies, it's just kind of, make my notes ahead of time, and then all this stuff.
I know, and, and we were kind of going back and forth a little bit, we kind of missed out.
Okay, last one would be policy, well, I guess, last one and then a question, policy thirty-four forty.
That's another one we aren't addressing, because we did not have empowering parents.
Okay, great, and then I guess the last question I've got is on ninety-eight oh three, and I.
Excuse me, can I just ask though, one of those options is, do we not already have a condition of graduation if someone has not met their obligations?
Um, the only thing that we can do is Sue's not in here, is she?
She was.
It does have something in our fines section that talks about holding the transcript, but we cannot hold the diploma.
Understood, okay, thank you.
I think it's the other way around.
Is it?
Isn't it?
It might be the other way around, Doug. But there is language that addresses that.
Yes, that's my.
So we issue the transcript, we can't withhold a transcript, but we can hold the diploma.
That's my way of law.
Until fines are paid, okay.
Okay.
Whereas the diploma, just a piece of paper certification and completion, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so then I just have a.
We swung a deal.
Yeah, I just got a final question, and I'm ready for a vote. Final question would be on ninety-eight oh three, the flags and banners, then we just decided we're not going to, we're going to take it as the recommended policy, and with neither of the options, is that correct?
Yeah, I think so, because I think it's included in the law, right?
And the law's pretty comprehensive.
Is it included in the law?
That the board, I don't know if it addresses board approval.
No, it doesn't, but I guess.
But it is allowed. I think that what you were saying was that if there was something that wanted to, you know, that, that somebody wanted to do, it would get brought to the board regardless for approval, so whether that's written in this policy or not, it's kind of.
Probably is good to add that in there, because that's in the subject.
I am totally fine with leaving that language in there, if you guys like that option.
But language is.
It just makes it clear, because it is there, but we don't want to be unclear.
The one that gives the board.
To add that option.
Which one?
To the, the flags and banners, the.
Which option?
Optional.
There are two options at the bar.
I'd say both, but I don't know.
You want both?
I think so, because then everyone's very clear, you know, that.
How does everybody else feel about it?
Can you direct us to a page?
Oh, yeah, so it really.
It is on page seventy-eight, yeah.
So it, it's under the restrictions shall not apply to, there's an optional number five, student and staff personal items, and then there's another option for the board to by motion adopt official school and district flags. So if you like both of those options.
I might just say not on the five, because it's students too. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to, like, add controversial stuff into the students, like, say it in there that they're allowed to have. I don't know. Or maybe I don't care, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess from my reasoning, I think the law's pretty explicit in, and, and I think they summarize things pretty well, and the more we add to it, I think the more conflict we might have, I just, I kind of think it's succinct and concise just the way it is. But I'm, I'm amenable to whatever everybody else has to say about it, I just want to clarify that before we take a vote.
Yeah, I, I would lean toward not worrying about number five, because I don't want to get into any controversy, but then on the adoption of school flags and official school and district flags, I do think it's, it's, I think it would be good to say it would just be by a motion of the board, because it is in the law, and that way, everybody understands that. It's just clear to them, even though we talked about the fact that it is included in the law, but it would be helpful if they knew that was included in the law.
So you're, you're saying the adopt official, official school and state flags, okay.
And the school and district flags.
Okay.
Question?
Because we do that anyway.
So the "we belong here," where does that fall? Where is that defined?
District flags.
Yeah. And where is that, where it says district flags?
The very last.
Last option on page.
Yellow option.
The very last sentence.
Yeah, page seventy-eight, the last option.
The last sentence of the yellow, the very last two words.
Yeah. Okay.
And we already did approve that.
I was going to say, when we talked about that campaign, the board previously approved it. I just don't know if the law would now require, like, displaying that. I just don't know if the law would now require, like, displaying that campaign on a banner, in the manner that we are.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
They want separate action for that specific banner.
When you're including banners, there you go, so, um, adopted, well, it says official school and state and district flags. It doesn't even mention banners. So do you wanna add banners?
Probably, yeah, probably.
Okay.
Because we don't want.
Or do you just change number seven to just include flags or banners representing official school mascots, flags, and, I mean, someplace, right?
Well, this, you know, if we stick with this, with the ISB recommended.
Mascots and colors, it doesn't encompass.
Mascots and colors, including district flags? I could very easily add it into that.
Board-approved district.
Oh, that's, that's what we're, I guess that's the difference that we're talking about here, is that.
These are already covered in the law, this would be a separate exception.
Right, I guess, so what I would say is that, I think with what they, the points they have here, they very succinctly, concisely summarized statute, and then if we stick with that, we, it's the recommended ISBA policy, and if we just add that last option down there, uh, adopt official school and district flags, and if you wanna add banners to that as well.
I like it.
Okay, does that sound good?
I like it, then it's clear to everybody.
Okay.
Like, what's, what is the process, if you wanna do a banner, if you wanna do something, the process is.
Yeah, but it has to be by motion of the board, and so they come up with a banner or flag or whatever. Does that sound good? Good, those are the, those are my only questions, otherwise I'm good with everything else.
Okay, so I would, and we're already in our special meeting, so I would entertain a motion to, um, except, to, here on first reading, the policy updates with the exclusion of the open enrollment policy, is there a motion?
I would like to, um, ask if, on entertaining that motion, if you will include that for first reading. Um, and then if we need a third reading, that we could do it that way, but not skip the first reading process, just first reading with ISBA's language, I'll bring it back for second reading. If it looks good, we can adopt it. If not, then we'll bring it back for third.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll cha- I'll modify my motion. Is there a motion to, um, here on first reading, all of the policies in update one and update two from the ISBA?
I hereby move that the board hear the following policies on first reading as presented in update one and update two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, this motion passed. The next item on the agenda is the review, reviewing the revised parental parent guardian universal consent form. And I think we already talked about that, so now we just really need a motion for that?
Yes.
As you discussed, the only thing that is taken out of that is the sex education topics.
Correct.
It's my knowledge.
Okay.
That is correct.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the new universal consent acknowledgement for, acknowledgement form, taking out specific language in regards to sex education. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the revised parent, parent guardian universal consent form as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Um, that motion passed. Is there any other business that we need to discuss? If not, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move you to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?